Good evening. Are you fun yet?
Yes.
Alright, um, gonna remind any individuals that wanna speak that they would speak speak in front of the podium. Uh, number three, welcome of guests. Reminder, as the Board of Education of Farmington Municipal Schools, I'll power to the board line its action as a public body and as an individual, a member of the board had no authority or power. As the body of the board, the board collectively holds powers and responsibilities. These powers are exercised transparently during these meetings just like this. Administrative and operational functions of the school districts such as day-to-day operations are handled by or under the superintendent and district staff. Uh, all board members are in attendance today. Uh, each board member will identify themselves when speaking and all votes will be via roll call vote. Guests wishing to provide public comment are asked to complete a public comment request form located on the table at the entrance. Cards should be placed in the basket at the sign-in table. As a reminder, comments related to board responsibilities may be passed on to the board for consideration. Comments related to administrative responsibilities or requiring further investigation may be passed on to the administrative personnel for consideration. Personal attacks upon board members, staff personnel, or other persons in attendance or absent by individuals who wish to provide public comments are discouraged. Guests to be called upon under the limited public forum section of the meeting. Guests submitting a form will be acknowledged and will have three minutes to state their comments slash questions. Guests are not allowed to share their time with other guests. A total of not more than thirty minutes will be allowed for all public comments. Um, here are the good things happening in the district. We're excited to welcome all students and families to the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We're thrilled to highlight the brand-new playground at Mesa Verde Elementary built over the summer. This wonderful addition was made possible by fourteen thousand raised through our PTOs, Wildcat Dash, a twenty thousand catalog grant, and four hundred thousand in FMS funding, Go Wildcats! At Heights Middle School, students are once again enjoying the use of lockers, something they haven't had since the pandemic. Go Knights! So they've been sitting since then?
Yes.
Ah, man. Uh, we extend, we want to extend our congratulations to Dr. Geraldine Garrity, Director of the Native American Programs, on her appointment to the New Mexico Indian Education Advisory Council. She was nominated by Navajo Nation President Dr. Booley Nigret. An incredible honor, and it's awesome. And finally, congratulations to Ms. Yezdekja of San Juan College High School for being named the two thousand twenty-five Outstanding Biology Teacher for the State of New Mexico. This prestigious award recognized her as one of the nation's top biology educators.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four, consideration to approve the, uh, to adopt the agenda.
Mr. President, I recommend the board approve the agenda as written.
Can I get a motion?
Motion. For you. Second, Audrey Stradlin.
Roll call vote, Ms. McWilliams.
Hi.
Ms. Maxwell.
Hi.
Mr. Corley.
Hi.
Ms. Stradlin.
Hi.
Mr. Mays.
Hi.
Number five, opportunity for guests. Are there? Darn it, I wanted to read all that. And you guys all wanted me to read that. I'm just gonna go real slow in that. Item number three. You guys remember, there's been one of those. Reports from superintendent staff and board. Uh, reports were provided to the board members and are linked to this meeting's agenda. Item number seven, consent agenda.
Mr. President, I recommend the board approve item seven, eight to seven, and on the consent agenda as presented.
Can I get a motion? Motion, Mays. Can I get a second?
Second, let's move.
Roll call vote, Ms. McWilliams.
Hi.
Ms. Maxwell.
Hi.
Ms. Corley.
Hi.
Ms. Stradlin.
Hi.
And Mr. Mays.
Hi.
Item number eight, Board of Education, Approval of Rosanante High School Improvement Plan, Presented by Milo McMahon and J.J. Sandoval.
Can I throw a presentation up here? Or? Awesome. So I got the easy job today. I'm here to introduce our principal, uh, J.J. Sandoval, also John Sandoval, on our emails. He was our principal at Rosanante. Uh, I started just a few months before him, but he hit the ground running at Rosanante. And today, he's gonna share some amazing things that's happening at his school and a plan moving forward for school improvement for Rosanante. Do we make the slide bigger so I can read?
That's not joking. So, for, for those of you that don't know, uh, Rosanante is currently designated as an MRI school. The reason we're designated an MRI school is because of our graduation rate. Our graduation rate for the last several years has been below sixty-seven percent, which is the standard set for by the state. Now, because we're in MRI designation, the state requires us to put together this plan. Within this plan, we need to have systems and checks and balances for our school. What are we gonna do to get out of designation? They, they wanna know what we're gonna do. Um, and, and so, we've been kinda doing that a little bit. And, and so, the state wants us to put this plan together, they want us to implement this plan. And if they don't see progress, or if they don't see gains, they could potentially, you know, worst-case scenario, uh, reconstitution, staff changes, open the school quarters. Um, we have a plan that started last year that we feel is gonna be beneficial for the Rosanante family, the students, teachers, the community, that we're gonna have an impact, it's gonna last long-term. So if you look at the graduation rate for the last couple of years, the two thousand twenty-four graduation rate, which was the year before I got here, was sixty-two percent. Uh, the graduation rate in two thousand twenty-two was forty-one percent. So in that three-year time period, it, it actually was fifty-four, fifty-four percent in two thousand twenty-three. So it jumped twenty percent in those three years. Well, and you might be wondering like, well, why is Rosanante's graduation rate so low? Like, why does it struggle, or why does it suck? Well, first of all, kids come to Rosanante lacking credits. It's not your traditional high school where kids go and they start fresh, they start cool, um, and they got four years to get to high school. The kids that come to Rosanante lack credits. Uh, we've been doing interviews the last couple of days, and I just interviewed a senior today with three and a half credits. A senior student is supposed to graduate this year, three and a half credits. Um, and those are the kinds of kids, not all of them, but the large majority of the kids that we get, they fall in that category. Uh, you look at some of the data up here, forty percent of the students after ninth grade, right, lacked the number of credits to be considered on track because of chronic absenteeism. Um, attendance, our attendance last year was one of the biggest focus areas, and I'll get into that a little bit later. But eighty-one percent of our sophomores that came to us last year lacked the appropriate number of credits to be considered on track. So most sophomores go into their sophomore year with seven credits, right? A lot of these kids have, uh, three and a half credits or less, uh, come to us last year, which is pretty significant. Uh, one of the biggest barriers for our kids is seventy percent of them state that they have some sort of mental health concerns. They suffer from anxiety, they suffer from depression, and that's a huge barrier for them to be able to come to school. Um, in, in some of our student and family surveys, one of the things that they told us was they felt that there was a lack of student engagement. Sometimes kids don't wanna come to school because they thought classes were boring. And so that's something that we're gonna focus on. We focused on it a little bit last year, but it's something we're really gonna hit hard this year. Um, and, and then families also voiced that they wanted to hear more from the school, like they wanted, you know, how are their kids doing? Uh, what is their attendance like? What does their grades look like? And that was something that we implemented last year. So one of the first things, last year was my first year. Um, and, and there were a lot of new systems and a lot of things that we put in place that, um, we saw some pretty significant gains and we saw some pretty significant growth. Um, i- it's kind of mind-boggling, uh, and I'll share with you a little bit later, kind of some things that, that we did last year compared to already this year that we're already seeing a difference. But one of the things that we did last year is we met weekly as a staff, and we, we identified students' concerns. Um, like, why do those kids struggle? What are we gonna do as a staff? What interventions are we gonna provide as a staff? Because our school is so small, um, we can provide those quick interventions and, and, and have an impact in classroom for those kids. We, we have some new software that we utilized last year for reading and math, MyPath Reading, MyPath Math. Um, and kids were placed in there based upon an initial assessment with the SAT data, and I'll get into that as well. Um, but we saw some kids in our math classes that were utilizing MyPath. They increased three, four, five, sometimes six, seven, eight levels just utilizing this intervention program. Um, one of the things we did last year, we also utilized Horizons, which is an SAT prep program. Our, our kids have, not many of them have ever seen an SAT test or any kind of questions. And so, with this practice test, we gave these kids the practice test. And then we identified in that, that, and you know, a, two areas where we thought we could make the biggest gains. Like, where can we improve our scores the most? Those were the areas that we focused on in all classrooms. So we had our PE teacher, we had our social studies teacher. They were given SAT-like questions in their classroom, but using their standards in the class. PE teacher would take a PE standard, use AI, thank God for AI, and, and would create an SAT-like question using Magic School AI, um, just so kids would be able to practice those questions in class. When they took the SAT, it wasn't something that was foreign to them, something that they didn't used to, that they had seen multiple times. Uh, for those of you that have been in coaching, you know, the repetition is the key to learning, right? The more you see something, the more you do it, um, the better you're gonna get at it. And so that was something that we did last year. Uh, one of the things we also did was we implemented a PDIS rewards system. Basically, we were incentivizing kids to come to school. We were incentivizing kids to do well in the classroom, and we were incentivizing good behavior. So any kid that had three or S absences for a term, had As, Bs, and Cs, and no discipline lineups, we were rewarding those kids. We were giving them pizza parties, we took them skating, we took them to Durango. Uh, it, it's something that we're gonna plan on doing again this year. Uh, one of the things we also did was an attendance competition. So we had a weekly attendance competition, and I would announce every Monday the attendance results from the week before. And then at the end of three weeks, the class with the highest attendance rate, we were giving them Taki's, we were giving them, uh, Gardettos, we were giving them, um, the little, the little thing she put in the toaster.
Pop-Tarts.
There were the Pop-Tarts, there we go.
Language.
I don't, I don't even, I didn't remember the better thing.
Oh, wait, we were, we were giving them those things, right?
Um, and it was kind of cool because we were also posting the attendance results in the comments area. And I remember kids, hey, you better start coming to school, because we're not gonna ever win the attendance, uh, competition because you're never here. And, and so kids started holding one another accountable, which was pretty cool. Um, and then finally, one of the big things that we wanted to do was we wanted to communicate with families, student success, attendance, grades. And so every week, kids that got to that attendance point where we were having concerns with their attendance, we were communicating with families. Um, saying, and, and they would get robo calls, they'd get text messages, they'd get a phone call from myself or the social worker. Sometimes parents are like, hey, look, you called last week, stop calling. Uh, and we tell them, look, we wanna make sure that we're doing our due diligence, so that you're informed of your kids' attendance. Because the last thing we want is for you to show up, we tend to, a lot of kids, and most parents are like, listen, I might never heard about the attendance issue. Why am I never hearing about it now? Um, so that was something that we made sure that we did consistently. Um, and because of that, we saw our attendance rate improve dramatically. The three years prior to me being there, the attendance rate was about eighty-four percent. Last year, we averaged ninety-one percent as an alternative. Um, our chronic absenteeism for two, the two years prior before I was there was over fifty percent. Last year, we got it down to about thirty-two, thirty-three percent. Um, so again, significant improvement, uh, with our attendance. Um, and then the biggest thing, right, kids are in class, kids are more successful in the classroom. And so our pass rate was above ninety percent last year overall as a school, okay? One of the big things that we did, we celebrated student success. Um, we had walkouts every term, so kids that graduated every term. Uh, we, we made it a big deal, we invited families out. Uh, Mr. Beal and Mr. Parente, a lot of whom came to our walkout ceremonies, and, and it's, it's pretty cool, you know? Families would show up with roses and hand out roses to their kids during that, um, because it, it's a special moment for them. And, and sometimes, you know, when you see family members crying because they never thought their kid would get there, um, because of the barriers they had to overcome, we, we wanted to make sure that we celebrated student success. So this year, some things that we're wanting to do, we're gonna continue to provide professional development for our staff regarding student engagement. Uh, we've got some people from PSB, or actually, she's, she works with PSB, but her name's Rachel Mann. She's gonna come and provide some professional development for our teachers. I, myself, am also gonna get some professional development on how to coach teachers and, and be a better coach for teachers, just so that, uh, again, there's quality instruction taking place in the classroom. We're gonna provide, uh, short-term tutoring for our kids. We wanna hopefully close those gaps so that we see grades improve. Uh, one of the new things that we're doing this year is we're implementing a homeroom. And in that homeroom, we're gonna utilize some SEL programs, or soft skills programs. Uh, one of the things that our parents say is like, I'm afraid my kids aren't gonna be able to get a job, they don't know how to talk to people. Um, and so just teach kids how to, how to interview, how to communicate, how to work with one another. Um, and the biggest thing that we're gonna utilize our homeroom for is tracking and monitoring attendance. Um, our goal this year is our graduation rate is above seventy-seven percent. That's our goal. We won't know what last year's goal is till probably March, maybe, this December. Uh, I'm hoping that it's, my, I'm, I'm hoping it's like seventy-five percent. And then I'm hoping that this year will be above eighty percent for each year. So, any questions?
Will you, will you share the presentation? All right, I can share, because you, you get, I can share. So the actual ninety-day plan, and the big plan, annual plan is in this link, or the proposed plan. So if you click on, I mean, it might be thirty days long.
Excellent.
So these are highlights, into bullets from the plan, but the full plan you wish is like that, right?
Yes.
It, it also includes his application that he has to write. And I'll say this, being a brand-new principal, running into this crazy grant application, trying to get budget that was starting in his school year, uh, was difficult, but he was able to get through it and get all these opportunities and funding for PD, for, uh, supply services for kids. And in the summer, he was here all summer working on it too, and we're at a good spot this year with this plan. So I think it's, it's gonna be very impactful for the students of Rosanante. And again, I've gotten very hopeful that we get above that threshold and be one of the only alternative schools out of designation.
For sharing, I really like the, um, you see, or I guess it's a SAT prep stuff, I think that's really important for all of our schools.
Oh, yeah, and, and practice, uh, repetition is the key to learning, you know? Uh, so that's, that's our thought. Uh, we'll continue to move forward with Horizons as soon as the funding release, hopefully, we'll, we'll reverse that programming, yeah, so.
And what, what effect do you anticipate that no cell phones helping?
Um, so I'll tell you what, it's been refreshing walking through classrooms and not seeing this and seeing kids with their eyes up, writing on paper, um, it, it's been really good. Uh, and, and one of the things that I've communicated with my staff, I've, um, beat them to it, like, I don't, I don't know how the other high schools are doing it, but we have little cabinets, little boxes. Kids are supposed to put their phones in, keep, keep shutting it, lock in it, and then they get it back at the end of the period. Um, it, it, it's been, the student engagement piece has increased tremendously, like, it, it, it's pretty cool. If I mean, walk in and see kids not doing this and actually paying attention. We've seen a big difference. Uh, Mr. Horazik, um, walked in through classrooms with me today, he's like, oh my gosh, I did, did I pay any attention? So it's, it's, it's kind of cool. And, and the kids, the nice thing is even the kids have noticed like, oh, I've actually been paying attention more in class because I don't have my cell phone to destroy. So, um, when we do interviews and we talk about the cell phone policy and how kids can't handle every parent that, we have not had one parent say, well, you can't, uh, pay the cell phone bill. Every parent says, it's about time, like, I'm glad this is not even happening. It, it just, and, and that's from our students, so.
How are the adults doing?
Um, so one of the things that I shared with my kid, my teachers, like, hey, you gotta leave by exam. You can't be checking your Facebook, shopping on Amazon. Uh, and so I've had some teachers that have volunteered to put their phone in the cabinet and, and leave by exam. Like, hey, look, I'm putting my phone in here, I expect everybody else to do it as well. So it, it, it really has been, so, really is.
On your SEL, uh, do you have, um, funding to help kids get to school if there's a problem with transportation? Or have you, is it just a contract where the parents are required to get them there, and that's stiff?
So a couple different things, right? So if, if kids ride the bus, tradition, what happens? If, if I'm a kid that lives in the Farmington High District, I would ride my normal bus to Farmington High, and then I get on the Rosanante bus from there, and a bus takes me to Rosanante, vice versa for PB, right? Same difference. Uh, we did have a young lady last year who lived down by Animus, the little apartments that were in that area, but she lives within two miles, and so she had to walk to school every day, so transportation was an issue. Well, we ended up building a model, a motorized scooter, and she used the scooter to get back and bolt from school, just to try to help around, so.
I'd love to see that. If there's ever a need like that, please let us know. We'll, we'll find a way, sure. Don't, don't let them not get there.
For sure. We will. Thank you. Sorry, my palms are sweating.
So encouraging, exciting.
Yeah, thank you for the energy and, and all the work, and it'll, it'll pay off and change their lives.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it.
We're here, we're your support team.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So, Mr. President, I recommend the board approve the Rosanante High School Improvement Plan as presented.
Can I get a motion?
So, Audrey Stradlin.
Second.
Second, Ms. Williams.
Roll call vote, Ms. McWilliams.
Hi.
Ms. Maxwell.
Hi.
Mr. Corley.
Hi.
Ms. Stradlin.
Hi.
Mr. Mays.
Hi.
Good job, Ms.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, and just so you all know that, uh, twice a year, the PEP comes.
Well, no, they came three times.
Three times, the, the Public Administration Department comes and, and he has to update them and, and, uh, review it, make changes, and not only that, but had to have a meeting even three within the last couple of weeks, right?
Yes, yes.
A lot, a lot of oversight and, and a lot of extra work. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Uh, B, approval step policy E dash zero five five zero emergency presented by Mr. Neal.
So this was a very simple one. If you scroll all the way to the bottom, all we did was add, uh, language at the bottom that connected it to the new cardiac emergency response plan, that you see in the red. Any questions? I recommend the board approve policy E dash zero five five zero emergency as presented.
So, good point.
Second.
Mays.
Second.
Roll call vote, Ms. McWilliams.
Hi.
Ms. Maxwell.
Hi.
Ms. Corley.
Hi.
Ms. Stradlin.
Hi.
And Mr. Mays.
Hi.
Letter C, approval step policy I dash zero five hundred, instructional goals and objectives presented by Mr. Neal.
Yes, and it is actually, um, zero, eh, zero zero five, do you know? It's right on the, it's right on the agenda, it's not the, uh, my fault. But anyway, it's policy I dash zero, zero five. So, um, the, what we considered here in red, uh, everything that's in black, what we considered was the underlying part um, that was included into legislation. Students shall be taught to read using the Science of Reading Structure of Literacy and Scientifically-Based Reading Instruction. Literacy instruction for English-language learners shall include evidence-based practices for bilingual literacy differentiation culturally and linguistically responsive instruction. So that was part of it. Since we've met last, uh, through some collaboration along with notes from you guys and others, um, this in the blue has been added, if you wanna take the time to read it. What it said previously, skills in computation, mathematics, added what's in blue to strengthen it. Same, four bullets down or four sentences down, um, the research and problem-solving skills in science and mathematics. I think these align, oh, by the left, what we're gonna do, um, rather than a profile.
Good work.
Any question?
Yeah. Is the file ready for instructional or instruction?
Say it again.
Yes.
I zero zero five zero.
That should be instructions.
Oh, yeah.
Instruct, yeah, 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 just wait. It's, it is instructive.
And we're gonna teach these kids great.
Make sure people are paying attention.
Yeah.
Sometimes I wonder, glad you aren't. Any questions beyond that?
Beyond that.
Mr. President, I recommend the board approve policy I dash zero zero five zero, instructional goals and objective as presented.
Can I get a motion?
Mays motion.
Second.
So, Audrey Stradlin.
Roll call vote, Ms. McWilliams.
Hi.
Ms. Maxwell.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Corley.
Hi.
Ms. Stradlin.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Mays.
Hi.
Approval step policy I dash six eight zero zero. Okay. Report cards, progress reports, presented by Mr. Neal.
Everything here, uh, was presented last time in the red, so nothing new if you keep scrolling down except to the bottom. Keep scrolling, these last two bullets, um, what's in blue. The last bullet changed a little bit, changed the letter, the, the language a little bit. School shall incorporate literacy and math-focused activities during the APT slash family events for K-five families to model strategies for supporting academic growth at home. We just wanted to change the language, sort of line with what we currently do with APTT and our family events. So not to say, to host at least one, because they host more than one, but just to incorporate literacy and math-focused activities during meet events.
Any questions?
Mr. President, I recommend the board approve policy I dash sixty-eight hundred, report cards slash progress reports as presented.
Can I get a motion?
Motion, Maxwell.
Second.
Uh, second, McWilliams.
Roll call vote, Ms. McWilliams.
Hi.
Ms. Maxwell.
Hi.
Mr. Corley.
Hi.
Ms. Stradlin.
Hi.
And Mr. Mays.
Hi.
Approval step, policy J dash five four four zero, cardiac emergency response plan, automated external configurators, presented by Mr. Neal.
This whole policy is brand-new, so everything in red is new, uh, provided by the policy service. Um, we already do all of this plus succeed, the timelines.
Any questions?
And they are on schedule for inspection.
Always. Yep, I know, I do it. Mr. President, I recommend the board approve the policy J dash five four four zero, cardiac emergency response plan dash automated external configurators as presented.
Can I get a motion?
Motion, McWilliams.
Second. Mays, second. Roll call vote, Ms. McWilliams.
Hi.
Ms. Maxwell.
Hi.
Mr. Corley.
Hi.
Ms. Stradlin.
Um.
Mr. Mays.
Hi.
Letter F, approval step policy J dash six seven zero zero, parental guidance for water safety, presented by Mr. Neal.
Another policy that is completely brand-new based off of legislation. Everything is new. We've added the language or some language into our student parent handbook. Gonna meet the requirement. Any questions?
Um, I have one question.
Sure.
So, I'm assuming there is insurance problems, or excuse me, um, how would I phrase that? I'm assuming that there are insurance questions dealing with this particular policy.
Or?
In case something's going on.
So, in the language, there is the legal disclaimer here. This is guidance, this is provided in compliance with the legal requirements by statute, but the district does not review that, sort of, our monitoring of listed instructors. The district will not employ or contract with these instructors, and so on and so forth. The district, the school district, assumes no responsibility or liability for any uncomfulfilled participation in any of listed swimming or water safety programs. So... So, the policy service provided all this, so I'm assuming and hopeful that they took all that into account.
Okay, that's where I was, because it left it where we are not responsible, or we're not held responsible, but in case of suit or then, I guess we mistake that once that we try. Okay. It's kind of like, we're, we're.
Who's gonna, who can read this, the?
We have to, I have something like that, so, that's like.
Logic.
Yeah. Okay, but unfortunately, by statute.
It's what you have to do.
The first ten days to be able to put it out.
Okay.
So, Mr. President, I recommend the board approve the policy J dash sixty-seven hundred parental guidance for water safety as presented.
Can I get a motion?
So, I'm for Stradlin.
Maybe a second.
Mays, second.
Roll call vote, Miss McWilliams.
Hi.
Miss Maxwell.
Hi.
Mr. Corley, I, Mr. Stradlin.
Hi.
Mr. Mays.
Hi.
Letter G, discussion twenty-twenty-six legislative resolution.
So, on August fourth, um, I believe you received an email from Joe Keen, a call for twenty-twenty-six legislative resolutions, if you received it. Um, it's now open and closes, or ends on Monday, September eighth. Um, if you, uh, well, let's keep in mind that the twenty-twenty-six session is a thirty-day session, which typically focuses only on budget and financial matters. Um, so if you have any resolutions that we wanna put forward, um, it's a little late considering the fact that our next board meeting on September ninth. Um, I don't know if you have any thoughts or or not, but typically, I would say that, uh, Miss Maxwell sits on that board that I'm assuming will meet about legislative resolutions. So if you don't get it in, and the Department of Municipal School Board, it can be discussed in in those meetings. Um, I don't have any. I don't know if anybody else does, but if you do, and you think of one, or you wanna talk about something, um, give it to Miss Maxwell or me, and we'll push it along through the organization, or I can't do the Superintendent's Association.
Okay.
How about you in the past?
There's been a couple of things, like, I think the last one that I remember was a push for minimum salaries, fifty, sixty, seventy was a real, a resolution Department of Municipal Schools supports, and the increase in teacher salary. Um, typically, they fall right in line with this, what the School Boards Association, with Superintendent's Association is doing anyways. It's just a, uh, we had added, so, layer of support. I can't, we haven't done one since I've been a superintendent.
And didn't the Superintendent's Association come up with something, doesn't?
They always do, right? Superintendent's Association will come up with the legislative platform, the School Boards Association will come up with the legislative platform. So it pretty much stayed terrible, those were organizations.
I love that they care about the organization.
But they typically fell in line with what those organizations were doing anyway.
Second.
Yeah. So, that's all I had. I just wanted to make sure that if you have something to let me know, and I'll push it through with the Superintendent's Association and this, well, the Superintendent's Association.
Okay, uh. Item number eight, we're in closed session. Department of School Board of Education will adjourn into executive session pursuant to section ten dash fifteen dash I H two and section P dash fifteen dash one, I H seven of the Open Meetings Act to discuss limited personnel matters and discuss with the school district's attorney. The review of pending or threatened litigation in which the school di- district is a party to and to prevent further litigation. No action will be taken, and only the items listed will be discussed. Can I get a motion to adjourn into executive session?
So, I'm for Stradlin.
Second.
Okay.
Roll call vote, Miss McWilliams.
Hi.
Miss Maxwell.
Hi.
Mr. Corley, I, Mr. Stradlin.
Hi.
Mr. Mays.
Hi.
Can we stop recording?
Good.
Yeah, see if it was done.
Can I get a motion to reconvene into open session?
So, I'm for Stradlin.
Second.
In my answer.
Roll call vote.
Hi.
Miss McWilliams, Miss Maxwell.
Hi.
Mr. Corley.
Yeah.
I, Mr. Stradlin.
Hi.
Mr. Mays.
Hi.
As required by section ten dash fifteen dash one J of the Open Meetings Act, let the record reflect that the matters discussed in the closed session were limited to specified in the motion to close the meeting. In accordance with the New Mexico Open Meetings Act, there were no action taken. Item number eleven, advanced planning, September first holiday, all offices closed, September ninth. Regular work session and board meeting. Item number twelve, motion to adjourn.
I will move, Ms. Williams.
Second, advise.
Mays, second.
Roll call vote, Miss McWilliams.
Hi.
Miss Maxwell.
Hi.
Mr. Corley, I, Mr. Stradlin.
Hi.
Mr. Mays, I. Six twenty-two, that's the way we roll.